Y'all ready?
Ready.
Staff ready? Good. I'm gonna go ahead and call this special called meeting of the Kerrville City Council for July 14th, 2025 to order. I'm gonna go ahead and ask Councilmember Place One, Delaine Segerman, to offer a prayer and lead us in the pledge.
Pray with me and we'll have our pledge and our prayer. Heavenly Father, this is a tough day, it'll be a tough week. We've been through many hours of decisions and support and teamwork and grief and recovery and we'll continue to do all these things that we've been doing for so long now. Just give us the strength to do that, to stick together as a team, learn how to be patient and not to take some of the things we hear so personal into heart. Because I do believe that at the end of the day, everyone, most everyone we talk to is for the good of this community. Bless our first responders and our city staff and all those that have worked tirelessly to bring this some resolve to this terrible situation. Give us the knowledge to know what we need to do next and to pursue it with a heart full of grace and hope. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Flag. The United States of America, a true republic, where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item 1A, resolution number 18-25, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Council, and thank you all for meeting. This is a resolution very similar, if not exactly the same, except for the resolution number of the resolution you adopted last time. And what this does is extends the declaration, disaster declaration. I do want to point out a couple of things in the disaster declaration that have changed. It does extend the disaster declaration that the mayor issued initially on July 4th. The duration this time is, it extends until he terminates it. So in other words, it's for an indefinite period of time, so we don't have to do this again. And we'll continue to give it publicity and we'll obviously continue to remain in the, under the city's emergency management plan. I want to point out one thing that I added this weekend after a conversation with the police chief. Under the city manager authority, you look at, there's a new subsection F, and that is pursuant to our tree preservation ordinance. We're gonna suspend any sort of enforcement or regulations with respect to that. He was getting questions from folks about how we would manage that. You all remember, you adopted those regulations earlier this year. So we have suspended that in accordance with one of the exceptions laid out in that ordinance. So that's the only change. This is, again, the mayor has the authority under state law to issue this, but he just has to get your consent.
Any questions for Mr. Hayes?
I have the one date that the resolution has the January 4th, that's getting changed.
Mayor?
Yes, that typographical error.
Typographical, January.
Oh, sorry.
January 4th.
Gotcha. There's a slight typo on the first recital. And we can just strike, if you want me to strike through that, or Howard is the most efficient way, we'll be happy to do that. Any other comment or questions? Why is the motion then?
I make a motion that we approve resolution number 18-2025.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it's unanimous. Thank you. Item 1B, extension of initial suspension period, Mr. Hayes.
Yes, sir, we're gonna avail ourselves again to state law here and extend the time period with which we are going to suspend any sort of response to open records requests. We can do this for another seven day period. At the end of that seven day period, we will have to start responding. And we've obviously had a number of requests for information. And so we'll start working on those probably this week. But this, again, is just pursuant to state law. You all have to take the action to do this. And so essentially through next, early next week, we will be gathering information, but we won't respond, we won't be responding. And then we, then we'll, you know, get back into gear and start doing that.
So of the information asked of us individually, should we gather that information or will city staff gather that?
We'll get with you, certainly if it's emails and things of that nature that we have on the server, we'll get with.
Yeah, I archive everything, so everything I've received.
We'll get with each of, each of you with respect to, if you're the subject of a request. And we'll look for that later this week.
Yeah, just give us some guidance, I'll, I'm happy to comply.
Yes, sir.
This is requiring a motion, I motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, is there a second?
Extend the suspension period for seven more days.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All votes in favor say, or vote, so vote, and it passes unanimously. All right, an update. Who's gonna do this for us? Let's start with Dalton.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Kind of a quick update, I know, I think Michael will have some additional stuff. We're obviously both navigating the emergency operations center, kind of on the regional side. And again, still kind of expanding the search area, working through all of that. We do have the debris, the debris locations, I'll let Michael kind of speak more to that one. But we're, we really are ahead of the game as far as kind of the disaster management, you know, side of things. At this point, you know, I'm not gonna say we're in steady state operations. We still have very, you know, active, you know, searches going on. We're just continuously looking at, you know, how we're doing that. Operations were suspended yesterday due to some of the rain and the events. We're gonna continue to monitor weather. We call those IWI's, incident within incidents. And so we know we're gonna have a bunch of those throughout. So our unified command is working on plans to make sure that we address those and mitigate those appropriately. We'll continue to, to look at scheduling. So we're gonna start looking at how, you know, what does our staffing look like? How we can start either scaling back in certain areas or if we need to ramp up in certain areas. So we're constantly assessing those, those situations or, or sections, if you will, on what we're gonna do to, you know, to make sure that we have the appropriate levels of staffing and we're not just over, you know, overdoing it. So we're continuously monitoring and assessing that. As far as the city side, Kim Ismer is kind of coming back to City Hall. Michael will be coming back to City Hall here in the next, you know, week or two. That way we can again, make sure we continue city operations and cleanup and budgets and $90 million worth of projects going on and all the other things that, you know, that we, that we have going on. And so we are not neglecting our city side of stuff at all. Quite the opposite, we're gonna make sure that we continue to do that. I'll be looking at my, my schedule and calendar as well. And I'm gonna be taking a step back from the EOC side, still monitoring it, still being a part of that, but making sure that I split that time appropriately for both of them to make sure we continue, you know, to reunite loved ones and also make sure that we, we continue to focus on the city stuff. But without that, Mayor, I'd turn it over to Mr. Hornis.
Mr. Hornis.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, thank you all for taking the time. I gotta start checking my calendars. I went to the, I was at the AOC this morning. And I was like, oh, I gotta be at City Hall in 15 minutes.
Thought about that, too.
Yeah. But it was good that I was there because I got some updates. And so as Dalton said, we're still in search and rescue mode. And so to that end, those folks are, they're doing everything that they can and they do their business well. And so we try to stay out of their way. That's kind of our MO when it comes to that. If they have resource requests or information or equipment, whatever they need, if any of that comes through us, we'll push that through TDM and what's called a STAR request. Basically, it's, you know, if you need a piece of equipment in someplace, we'll push that up and we have a quick discussion about it if we even need to. And then that resources, those resources are here within hours or, you know, sometimes depending on what it is, a little longer. And so as a part of that search, the group has, has asked us to look into the feasibility of a few things. So as you can imagine, and they've asked this of us in the city, and Nimitz Lake is saturated. It's overtopping the dam and it's gonna continue to do so as long as the, as long as the rain's coming. They have a hard time searching in there because that water is, 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 the turbidity is what they call it. You can't see through it, right? In addition to not being able to see through it, there's a lot of debris within there. And so we've been working on a plan to, to pump that water out of there. Every day that it rains makes it, we have to push it and push it. So we'll need a few days of clear weather in order to accomplish that. So Stuart Barron and myself, a whole host of people from the state and the feds have been talking about ways to work this out. And so we're in process with that. So that's kind of our component of that search and rescue. And I imagine they're having those conversations upstream as well about ways you can do that without causing further, causing further issues, right? Because there's a cause and effect to everything that happens. And so it's a delicate balance. As far as the debris management, I've been meeting with TechDOT and Tech Department of Emergency Management a few times a day. TechDOT has a contractor out now doing debris management. And so essentially the breakdown will be TechDOT does state roads. So folks who are able to get debris to the right of way on state roads, TechDOT's contractors will be coming up, picking that up. They want that stuff separated out. And if any of y'all have an opportunity to share that, that flyer that has the debris management, please kind of continue to do that because it's a great way, the more we can get that information out, the better. So separating that stuff out into those piles. And so construction debris materials are gonna go to the landfill. Vegetative debris is gonna start going to two locations. One at the soccer fields on 534, adjacent to the landfill. And then Center Point ISD has another location. I think where they're gonna build the new school down there at some point. It's anywhere between 30 and 100 acres, I can't remember which. And so as a part of that process, what will happen is that vegetative material will sit for about 60 days to dry out. And then they have what's called air curtains, which will then, they'll start to dispose of that debris. They did it in Harvey, they've done it in Beryl, quite a few different events. And so it's, it's a, it's a semi-quick way to dispose that debris. And then white goods, what they call white goods, which is refrigerators, stoves, metal, in some cases. There's a few locations here in town, Scrap Solutions and Curville Recycling, that people, that they'll take those to. They use those materials. And so TDM and TechDOT are taking that to them. If they're not already being picked up and taken to them, I think they're out there doing some of that themselves. We obviously want, until DPS says, you know, freely, freely go up there and do that work, listen to the DPS troopers and, and stay away until they open that up. We have a third land use agreement now for a, for a staging site. And that is at the, behind the airport, behind Mooney Plant. So there's a kind of a space there if we need a third site, location for some of the debris. And then I'll get to the debris fees at the end. And then I'll, so just briefly talk through the water plant. So the water plant is down, we're on well water at this point. We had initially started a conversation about craning in an excavator to be on a barge so we could scoop out that section at the very corner near the raw water tank so that we could isolate that, empty it out, do the repairs that we need. Now that the state has asked us to consider this sort of de-watering plan, we might hold off on that because basically the water levels, if we can get the water levels to drop, we can get in there as kind of a secondary function, primary function of any of that de-watering is search and rescue, obviously. And so we're working through several plans. Our staff is, I don't wanna say normal operations, but we have them doing, we have to do the things that we have to do. So yesterday, as an example, streets had to be out, putting barricades up within the city, right? Because as everybody knows, in town, we also get floodwaters in Quinlan Creek and Town Creek. Those areas will, you know, are prone to some flooding. And so we had barricades up. We also put up a barricade, it's down now, but we had put one up between Clay and 27 on Water because people were congregating right there where that memorial has been set up. And, you know, I, I fully understand, you know, that, that now seems to be a spot, problem that we have. And we've all kind of gone through several times and said, listen, people are not looking out for you on the street. Do not stand in the road. I can't, we can't have officers out there monitoring that. And so, you know, if it gets busier, we could shut it down again, but that impacts operations for businesses there. We have a few restaurants in that area. And it's, you know, as much as we can also get folks to not be on the street and be on the sidewalk. Nobody listens to me.
Yesterday was pretty good, though. I went by there around 4:30.
Yeah.
And I was maybe one of four people.
Good. I mean, I mean, not good, but I mean, you know, I just, I wanna make sure that people stay off of that. And folks are parking on the other side by the parking garage. And I'm like, there's literally just a parking garage right next door, just 100 more feet. And you're parked in a parking garage, not in the right of way. So if we can do that. Let's see, so parks.
Can I make a comment about that? As someone who has an interest in that block?
Yes, sir.
If it becomes necessary to block it off, and you feel it's necessary to block, where access to the parking lot is still maintained and the intersection of Clay and Water is blocked and then basically in front of our front windows is blocked, I don't think our family's gonna have any problem with that.
Yes, sir.
But as the crowds thin out, I'm just giving you that as an option.
Yes, sir, and this is only if they surge, right? And so we ask people to just, you know, use common sense when you're out there.
Common sense is
Or define the terms.
Something we request of everyone.
Yes, sir. Regarding the debris, the dump fees. So we have been working with Republic. They have, they have agreements with us where they've allowed local residents to dump at their site. We give them vouchers a couple of times a year and they can go do that, otherwise they pay for it. We also now have both of these state agencies going to pick up debris and taking that debris to those sites. And that cost is covered by the state and through the state. And we have continuously kind of said this message. If you want to take it out there now, rather than put it in the right of way and have it be rather ugly, sitting in the right of way, the ugly portion in the right of way is free. Taking it to the dump right now, there is a cost associated with that for the, for the, for the expediency of it. We are talking with TDM about that because there are a lot of folks who are continuing to do it. And we realize that's a, that's a, there are high costs, especially for folks who have large amounts of debris. Now, the other thing I would wanna caution folks is that when TDM and TechDOT and their contractors pick up that debris and take it out, that has been checked and checked and checked and checked so many times before they move that because we understand the sensitivity of that. I don't, I can't say that for everything that's going down there now. So I really would urge folks to put that stuff out in the right of way. Let the state, let the search and rescue teams continue to do what they need to do instead of bringing that stuff down to the dump. Now, I know that's, that's not gonna happen entirely. But I think the messaging that we've tried to send out is that it's slower and a little more methodical, I don't know, methodical, it's just, it is slower. But it is at no cost to the volunteer or the homeowner themselves that is taking it down there. But if they want that stuff out of their home and off of their property and in the dump, there's a, there's a fee for that. And I don't, I've been trying to figure out a better answer for that. We've been talking to Republic about it. We're, we're still coming up with more questions than answers on that. So the simple message is that if you want that service to be free, place that in the right of way and wait for those contractors come. They're gonna be coming over and over and over again. They'll come to an area, they'll clear it, that's not the last time they're gonna come. They know that a lot of folks can't get to their property, they know it hasn't been cleared. They're going to keep coming back, they're going to keep, they're gonna be here for months coming through, so. With that, I don't know that I have anything else, but if you have questions about something I didn't cover, please let me know.
I do. And I just wanna get this on the record. Along with everything else that has gone on over the course of the last 10 days or so, we're not only dealing with all of the aftermath from this tragic event, but now we have to worry about threats that are coming to staff, targeted threats that are specific to individual staff members. And I want it on the record that I would like additional security here and I'm not leaving here till we get it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll talk that through with the, with the folks at the state and we'll talk it through with the chiefs. But we've instructed staff, we're getting so many calls flooding in and 99% of them are amazing. There are folks who are just like, how can I help, what can I do? The second somebody starts to get abusive with staff, they start to use foul language, any of that stuff, I've said, hang up, be done, we are too busy, we have too many things going on. That's not what they signed up for. Those folks can call me, they can call Dalton.
But they're not.
No, they're not, ma'am. And I mean, it's the, it's the way of this, right?
It's being proactive and not reactive.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't want anybody in here that doesn't belong here.
Yes, ma'am. We certainly will, we will put that up the chain. Now everything's in a process in this whole thing, but.
Thank you.
City Marshal will be here this week. We had DPS, so at the last council meeting, we had DPS troopers, we had two officers, three officers, and then we have the officers that are here usually. So we'll make sure we, we continue to do that.
Okay.
This might be more toward Dalton, but this morning on the news, they're saying our number's still holding pretty close to the 161 missing. But now they're saying we're up to 132 recovered. That entire length from Hunt down to Canyon Lake, or is that just here, sir? I haven't heard a good number either.
Yeah, I think, I think that 132 is numbers from all over the state or, or in the flooding stuff. We're, you know, we get, we get updated numbers typically in the evening, so I haven't got today's numbers yet. I just need to follow up with them. The 161 is holding pretty steady, it's gone, it will fluctuate. What we wanna make sure that we have, and Texas DPS is, is the one that is navigating all of that. It is a one source of information, which before it was kind of multiple. And so we wanna make sure that we have accuracy with the, with the numbers, reconciliation with it. We wanna make sure that, you know, any, anybody on the missing persons one is, is verified. And so that's why that Texas DPS is kind of holding, you know, holding those numbers. So as this develops, those numbers will come out. But I'll get confirmation on, on the current numbers for Kerr County and we, and send y'all an email and we'll report that.
Thank you, sir. Order pray for.
Yes, yesterday I attended this task force meeting with TDM. Ken Bell spoke to us and he, his message, if we said nothing else today would be no more donations. We're at capacity, we appreciate all of the donations, but we literally just don't have the space, the time and people to manage it. So hold on to it in your place of location, wherever that is, whether it's another state, another city, another county. And at some point, if it's still an offer and we still need it, we'll be happy to take it. But we just can't take anymore. There's a couple of committees he wants us to look at forming in the future. And that would be unmet needs groups of folks. Who, I know the first day I was at EOC, my man walked in who had lost his identification, for instance. And we had, did not have the ability to duplicate that for him. But, you know, now that we've kind of got a system and we, we know who's who and have a lot of help, we might be able to get back in touch with folks like that and help them now when we couldn't before. And then a long-term range recovery group. He thought at some point we might want to have a committee that looks at long-term because right now we're still looking at immediate needs and taking care of those. But, so that was what I was told to mention today in today's meeting. And the 210-895-3212 number is still a good hotline number for help of any kind. Whether you, Billy Jeans called, for instance, and said, we need to get some canons over and just check our debris before we remove it, things like that. So that's a good number.
Yeah, and on that note, Delaine, I'm also getting inquiries about where people can bring personal stuff belonging to other people that need to be returned. Is there a centralized location where we can start dropping that kind of stuff off?
Oh, that's a tough one, right?
I can answer that one.
You can?
Yeah, so we, we, very early on, we started getting questions about that. And there are some nonprofit and some church groups that are trying to collect some of that. I know the sheriff is also, you know, taking, you know, a few things here and there. We didn't feel that we had the capacity to be able to take that on effectively. And so a lot of these nonprofit groups, so we're still trying to find out who all is collecting that information. And once we can get that, we will definitely push it out. But there are some groups that are collecting it, we just don't know who right now. So I don't think one's centralized, but there are some people that are out there.
So Kelly just texted me. They can call 210-895-3212.
Hang on, say that again?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, I gotta laugh every now and again, or else I'm not gonna make it.
I do wanna make one clarification to Ms. Segerman's remarks. We're talking about, we are at capacity with in-kind donations of food and other materials and clothing. We are still accepting financial donations.
Yes, sir, we are, so.
We will need every penny that, that generosity allows people to send.
Comment on that.
Go ahead, ma'am.
So this weekend, there was a keyboard warrior stating that the funds that were given to the Hill Country Foundation are being given out as loans. That is totally incorrect. That money is not being given out as loans, it's grants, it's gifts. They're vetting who they give that money out to. And it is, it's donations that are given back out to the community. As they said on Friday, there's already been over $5 million dispersed. And we just need to, that's why I didn't get on social media until this weekend. And I saw that, and we just have to dispel those rumors that people are saying that. So it's, it's not a loan, they're not getting the interest on it and they don't have to pay it back.
Other comments? Yeah, let me close with this comment.
Sir, if you don't mind. I was gonna answer Councilwoman Segerman's question about the gentleman who lost his identification. So DSHS has set up a family assistance center. And they have, it's not public because it's for people who have lost. And so, you know, we gotta kind of guard that. But they are represented there is postal service, oh gosh, driver's license, passports, Department of Information, Department of Insurance Resources. So a lot of, I mean, if they're like, a lot of folks, they're like, I have insurance, but I don't know what my policy number is. And some folks are like, I don't even know who my carrier is. And they have those resources to pull that stuff up for them. There's counseling resources there, there's a, there's a litany of resources for those folks. And so if they just, they can look up, Family Assistance Center.
So real quick, the Family Assistance Center is obviously for victims or victims' families who are injured. The Disaster Recovery Center is a mirrored version of the Family Assistance Center, open to the public for those exact things. And that's at First Baptist Church. That is the one that anybody who has any vital records that they've lost, anything, you know, damage related, flood related, that is where they're gonna wanna go is the Disaster Recovery Center.
At Trinity?
Uh, First Baptist.
First, okay.
On Washington Street.
On Washington, right, okay.
And if they have, if anybody has any questions, you know, they can call city, call the county, and we can get that information to them.
There are no more, more from staff and none from council. I'd like to close with this comment. This flood was impossible to accurately and precisely predict. But what we five could predict absolutely is that we five knew that city staff would go above and beyond predict absolutely is that we five knew that city staff would go above and beyond the call of duty to meet the needs of our citizens and visitors to our community. Thank you for everyone, thank you for all you've done, and please, if there's some way to tell our staff, all of our staff, that we five are grateful, please do so.
Yes, sir.
Any other items? If not, I'm going to call, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at eight thirty.